It's extremely... Thank you for acknowledging.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 20th Board of Selecting Meeting. My name is John Arena. Tonight concludes the fourth of four meetings held in December for the purpose of reviewing the details and context about the town and schools, elements of the town and schools budget. This will further be complemented by other discussions that occur in the month of January. The purpose of tonight's visit and the three that preceded it were a direct response to comments received by the public in our Board of Selectment survey taken in August up to the first week of September, which clearly stated that more data, more clarity, and more context was needed. We trust that these have helped, and if any of you are watching either on broadcast or on replay, urge you to get in touch with any member of the board if you have any further questions. With that, I will, I presume there are no Selecting comments?
I have a quick follow-up from last night, John. When I talk about the Climate Advisory Committee sunset clause, in our, I think it was our July meeting, we voted to extend them to December 31st, 2017. And you guys, and it's on the website as being sunsetted at the end of this month. You guys indicated that we had extended them?
Thought we did.
I thought we did.
I couldn't find it. I looked through the minutes, and I couldn't find it.
It would be somewhat unusual to make it end of December, but I guess it's not a possibility.
Somehow two years is in my brain.
Yeah, we'd have to look. That sounds like a surprise, but we'll have to go back and check.
So if no action is taken, does that automatically mean that they're sunset, or should we make a preliminary motion?
They can't, they can't meet till you reconstitute them. It's not a big deal. They're gonna meet in January, you know, before January 9th.
I want to do provisional three months till we get this straightened out.
Yeah, you can certainly do that. I mean, I don't think anyone's gonna mind. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't think it's any of our intentions to let that happen.
No, okay. So I'll make a motion to extend them until March, it's the last 30, is there?
31st.
31st.
I'll second that.
2018.
2018.
All right, motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Again, we'll check. It may have already been.
Yeah, I could've missed it. I went through the minutes, but.
Any other comments?
Thanks, Andy.
Okay. Nothing, any public comments before we open up the... Okay, thank you. Ryan, Jeff?
Good evening. The chairman, thank you. And then there was DPW. Ryan, if you know Ryan, first of all, the town engineer, he and I are gonna double team this on certain parts of it. I'm gonna start out kinda giving an overview of the changes, really, the summary changes between FY18, FY19, as well as a little description of each division within Public Works, just to kind of outline that as a starting point. Once you go through this process, Ryan's gonna give like an overview on the capital program, going through a bunch of major projects we're working on, and then I'll pick it back up again with some handouts that I think the board will find interesting and the public will find interesting regarding recycling program and C Click Fix program, some other things that we've been, within the department, we've been, we've been working on, so.
I wouldn't feel too bad about going last, Jeff. I mean, the first Shelby last.
That's right. I was gonna say that, too. With a name like Zaya, I'm used to it. The FY18 budget compared to FY19, we've got one full-time FTE that's increased. The budget is up 5.7 percent. Total Public Works budget, $3,543,100. Again, it's a 5.7 percent increase. Starting with the Administration Division, Administration supports the department with procurement, administration, budget preparation and coordination, departmental personnel and payroll services, accounts payable, processing cemetery administration services and responses to public inquiries and just overall concerns from the public. On the Administration Division, salaries are increased by 17.25 percent. This reflects the addition of one full-time clerk to provide both payroll and bureau support functions, as well as in line with the division's succession plan, which we started a number of years ago, and this would be another component of that, of that program. Also, senior administrative assistant is increasing to 40 hours to help cover some of the clerical duties within the Cemetery Division. Also, within the salaries is a plan to increase, projected for, for an increase in the negotiation contracts that'll be upcoming. Expenses are increased 2.4 percent, just reflects some additional advertising costs.
Hang on just a sec.
I'm sorry.
They're very orderly.
And that's, so that's Administration. Going to the Engineering Division, this is Ryan's favorite. The Engineering Division provides services to all departments within the town of Redding. Division is responsible for preparation of plans, contract documents, specifications, and estimates, survey layout, inspection, design and construction, management of town construction projects, upkeep of traffic markings, signals, review of subdivision plans and site plans for accuracy and conformance with the subdivision rules and regulations, review of conservation submittals, preparation of subdivision and conservation bond estimates, inspection of subdivision construction and administration of the pavement management program in Chapter 90, roadway improvement program. Division also provides technical assistance and guidance on various town projects, performs traffic studies, regulates and inspects private construction activities in the town, responsible for the maintenance of all records concerning subdivisions of land, roadway, water and sewer, drainage, construction, town maps, issuance of street addresses, updating 911 address records, and issues of other, other various permits. It's a lot, and we'll talk a little bit later about some of the issues we're having right now with some staffing issues and so forth in the department that Ryan's gonna talk a little bit about in more detail, but actually, the salaries in the engineering are up 11.9 percent. We're looking for additional engineering aid positions to be added this year in the budget to support the office field coverage. With a number of projects, things that I just mentioned, as well as a lot of the capital projects, there are times when the public would come in, and we have a lot of counter traffic, a lot of public coming in to look at maps and to, for a lot of various questions, and especially during construction seasons, a lot of times where there's just not engineer available. And very politely, we take the name and number, and we get back to them, but that's one of the issues that we're gonna run, I'll talk a little bit about later on. Going on to the Highway Division, Highway Stormwater Division is responsible for construction and maintenance of all public roadways, catch basins, drainage, sidewalks, traffic, street signs, snow plowing, sanding and salting operations, and snow removal. In addition, the Equipment Maintenance Division provides daily preventive maintenance services for over 130 vehicles, equipment townwide, including police, fire, school, facilities, and obviously the Public Works Department.
Jeff, for this and the other categories, do you also have the dollar amounts in addition to the percentages?
We have those, yeah, we have those, actually, there's another slide, we'll show those.
Okay, that'll be helpful. Thank you.
The Highway increase in salaries is 5.2 percent. Again, this reflects the addition of long-term seasonal workers to help support the crews, as well as a, again, a projected potential contract slate increase. Expenses are level funded. Fuel expense actually was decreased this year again, but that decrease is offset by some outsourced repair accounts that need some adjustment, as well as a, some of the painting accounts, line painting accounts. Stormwater salaries actually decreased by 11.9 percent. That basically reflects a turnover personnel. There's a slide later on that shows a number of changes in the department over the last five years. I estimate about a third of the personnel has changed in five years, including all five supervisors. So there's been a lot of change, a lot of staff changing, promotion, a lot of younger, you know, workers coming in, so there's been some major changes with the personnel structure.
And by turnover here, you mean that very circumstance where somebody senior is retired, somebody new has come in?
Right.
Thank you.
Going to Cemetery, Cemetery Division, responsible for the preservation, care, embellishment of our beautiful cemeteries, including Laurer Hill, Forest Glen, Charles, Longwood End. Salaries are increased by 10.3 percent. Again, this reflects one additional long-term seasonal employee, as well as replacing the equipment operator position from a, from a labor slot. Expenses are increased based for supplies, equipment, and various material accounts within the Cemetery Division.
Jeff, what's the meaning of the term "long-term"? Are you talking about full-time versus part-time?
It's long-term seasonal, which basically runs from approximately April 1st to December 1st. So there's long-term seasonal and short-term seasonal. We have some short-term seasonal people that, like college kids, will come in for the summer, June, July, August, and then the long-term seasonal's come in roughly about April 1st, and they'll go to approximately December 1st. And then with the, again, Fox Forest Division maintains street trees, grounds for all town properties, parks, schools, ballfields, playgrounds, tennis courts, and we're gonna support school buildings. Division also maintains compost center, and they are in charge of setting up the holiday lights, so they always do a good job of that. The salary in the Fox is increased by 5 percent, again, reflecting one additional long-term seasonal person. Expenses are increased by 9.8 percent, which again, supplies, licenses, and contract services. Basically, what it comes down to is the increase, it's approximately $142,000 increase for all these positions. If you eliminate those positions, the long-term seasonals, the intern engineering, and the clerk in administration, the budget is up 1.9 percent. So it's, it's a small increase. Again, the whole increase really is, that 5.7 percent, it comes down to those, those positions.
Do you have a slide that shows that, the summary you mentioned earlier?
I don't think we do, but I could, I could get you that.
It might be helpful to amend this with just a table that shows each of the baseline percentage increase, the dollar increase proposed.
We should probably put together a, an Excel spreadsheet for each one of the departments doing exactly the same thing, maybe summarize, 'cause, I mean, this has been like drinking out of a fire hose in these last four weeks. Stuff is pouring in.
Greg is smiling back there.
This is DPW.
You know what I'm saying, though. I mean, if we could...
I'll give you some of that later tonight, and the rest of it in early January.
Yeah, 'cause if we, I mean, it's really simple, like a spreadsheet with tabs.
Just to, just quickly on accommodated costs, as you know, we're increasing the snow and ice budget, it's 4 percent. Kind of getting back to our program, we're, at one point, had a goal of getting like a 10-year average for snow and ice. My first few years, I think we were bumping it up 25, $30,000 a year, and then we got away from it for a couple of years, and this bumps it up. We're not there yet, but it's, it's progress towards that goal. Street lighting is reduced, just based on, past the street, I talked with Bob about that, and it's reduced 11.1 percent. The solid waste recycling program is up 3 percent to the, with a 10-year contract or two years into it, so that'll continue on. I do have a slide later on on the recycling program, and one of the concerns, well, as briefly mentioned now, that we're having a lot of problems, we're not having a lot of problems here. A lot of communities with JRM are having problems. We have a few with some contamination of the recycling material that we're putting out. People are putting in things that just not appropriate, not recyclable, so, and they're getting to a point where some of the equipment and some of the processing areas that they have, factories are, have the zero tolerance policy as far as recycling contamination, so. The other problem is actually, and again, we've addressed this about a year ago, and really, we did really well. It's starting to slip a little bit. Again, we have issues here, but much more so in other communities that the JRM is involved with, but people, again, putting their plastic, recycles in the plastic bags. It's a no-no. It's just, it messes up the whole system, and it, the equipment machinery gets shredded, and it's, I guess it's a nightmare.
Bags will all be gone soon.
But again, it's, and I got half your slide. We're still doing really well. I mean, we're still in the upper twenties percentage-wise for recycling, which is, which is really good for a community that doesn't have a pay-as-you-throw system. I mean, it's, it's still at the top.
Jeff, one quick go back. So snow and ice increased by 4 percent. I thought our strategy was intentionally to keep it, say, below the 10-year average because of the reinforcement.
It's well below still.
It's still, yeah.
So this still keeps it there?
I think we're up to 6.
65 or 70 percent.
And then street lighting reduced. That's the labor to maintain the streetlights?
That's the renewable process?
That's the energy cost?
That's the energy bill from J, from RMLD.
That's where it sits in the budget.
And how far, how, what's our retrofit? How far through the system are we in terms of retrofitting streetlights at this point? Would you guess halfway, two-thirds, three-quarters?
Uh, I've been working on it. I know from working here in other communities, I would say like, yeah, 40, 50 percent, something like that.
Colleen O'Brien's presentation with RMLD, I think she said she had one more good year, and a little bit of a trail off into the following. So that would say maybe you've got another 5 percent reduction that you might enjoy in coming here.
Yeah. Medicines has gone down since, over the last, I think, two or three years, I think it's gone down, you know.
That's gotta be tied to the lights and the bulbs.
I didn't know if it was labor or energy, but now, now it makes sense.
It's energy.
No? One of you's the Michael. You're still Bill Brown.
Yeah, you reduce your energy costs, but your cost of the plant keeps going up. If you look at your bill, the RMLD charges you to be accustomed to, and that has gone up steadily.
And on the, thank you, Bill. On the contamination, is it just plastic bags, or are there other key examples that you wanna?
Let me just, it's other issue, it's other material.
There are people sitting by their TV waiting to hear this.
Contamination levels, recycling's become a serious issue when unamicable materials. Residents continue to include diapers, wooden crates, gas jugs, paint cans, garden hoses, Christmas lights, and worst of all, plastic bags in the recycling. Again, I don't, like, this was a letter that went out to all the community, so I'm not sure what the degree is here, but in general, those are the things that they're concerned about.
All right, thank you.
And before Ryan starts talking about some of the capital projects, I think, John, maybe answering some of your questions, the, I got this from Jean. I like the color of her chart, so I think we did a colored chart. The red is the current position that are vacant, and engineering, you got the senior civil engineer, that was Ryan's old position of prior, his promotion to town engineer, and also the Foresty, Fox Cemetery supervisor position is still vacant. We're trying to fill that, and just, you know, it's been an issue for a while.
Go full screen.
And then kind of scan across.
Is that a video?
Yeah.
The greatest is the positions that are requesting the temporary long-term seasonal in the Highway, in the Fox, the Forest, and Cemetery, also in the Water and Sewer, looking to change to short-term seasonal, so a long-term, and also add a clerk. We do, also, on your notice of engineering, we'll look at, it's the temporary engineering that I made, I mentioned earlier, 27,500. And we do provide services to the Trails Committee and Town Forest Committee on occasion. They'll ask for some help with, you know, some labor, some material, so forth. They do have budgets, I think they each have a thousand-dollar budget that they can draw down from for, and they have a lot of volunteer projects and so forth, so we work with them. And also, we, now we have a process online where people can book the Town Forest online, a lot of the scouting groups, people go right online, can book it, and we give them the rules and regulations and so forth, so that's worked out pretty well with the folks.
Jeff, before you move on to that, on your first slide, it said that you were going, changing to one more FTE?
One full-time FTE.
Oh, okay, 'cause there's a lot of green in there, it looks like it adds up to more than one. Is that, I mean, are there corresponding positions that are not filled, or to sort of get to one, or?
No, these are all new. So in terms of, the one full-time was, was the clerk, and these are all...
Just fractions of another position.
Right. Probably...
That adds up to kind of, you know, three, maybe?
Maybe a couple, two positions, maybe?
Okay, I just wasn't clear.
Jeff, Jeff, if I could ask you, I just want to make sure I'm following the staffing changes with regards to the municipal sheets. The, so the engineering temp, help, engineering aide, that's a new, new position?
Correct. We did have one, there has been one in the past, what, two years ago?
Yeah, that's right.
Two years ago.
And is that seasonal, or, 'cause the salaries fairly low.
Yeah, it's, well, it's an intern, usually it's 30.
Whatever the co-op position, how it falls seasonally with the co-op position.
Is it a full FTE?
No.
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 Okay. And then, the, then there's another one with temporary highway wages? Is that new?
Long-term seasonal, correct.
That's, that's the long-term seasonal?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. And then, and then the DPW Senior Admin Assistant went up 18.5 percent. Is that a change in FTEs, or is that just a salary bump?
It's the hours. Yeah, we're going from 37 and a half to 40 hours. As well as that projected, you know, cost of living increases as well.
But also going from 37 and a half to 40 hours?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And I think, and then the stormwater skilled laborer, stormwater, stormwater laborer, stormwater mechanic first class, are you shifting a position there or something?
Correct, right. It's, there's a change over one position, you're shifting to another, to another category.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. Thanks. Is that red, that red box, is it empty box? Is that Bob Keating?
Yes.
All right. Up top.
He's up top in the place.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that didn't fill?
We had it filled.
We had it filled, and then it emptied.
Correct.
And we had... We had it filled again.
And it emptied again.
Wow, never really got...
It never really got...
It was...
Tough labor market.
Yeah. Yeah. What do you, is that because of the scope of the work, or because of the compensation, or both?
I would say it's both. I think it's the, it's a lot. I mean, you have that...
I'd say it's more the scope.
To have the three divisions under one, you know, Fox Forest Cemetery is a lot. I mean, it's very unusual. I mean, it's, we've had it brought up here for a long time, and that was the setup, and we knew going in that this could be a difficult one, as is to replace, especially at the salary. And it's something that, you know, we've talked about, and is going forward, they'd be able to look at that salary.
You may have to rethink how you have that job structured.
Correct.
Is it possible that turns into two jobs?
The other issue here is it's a union job, so we can't do what we want, just to be clear.
That's the newest union. Yep.
John?
I'm sorry, Bill.
Yeah, the temporary help, the long-term seasonal help will help us a lot. At one time, we had four seasonal, long-term seasonal, we're back to three now. Because our business keeps increasing as people go down.
Ryan participated. Seems he's sunshine. Okay, thank you. Ryan's gonna talk now a little bit about the, some of the capital programs that are ongoing. I mean, look at, as you know, I'm going to be with a very robust capital program, which is continuing, you know, we're talking to Bob about, you know, in the future, looking at that, and making some calculated decisions to maybe move some things around. But right now, we've still got a lot of things going on. And again, this is probably the other things, some of the things we just finished up with NWRA and Mass D O T, and West Street and Oak Street. This is, this is our stuff here, so Ryan wants to talk a little bit, if you want to.
So basically, I'll keep it nice and brief and short here, I don't want to bore everyone, but the projected 2018 proposed capital projects, we started bringing in some of the schools, doing some site improvements, starting particularly at Joshua Eaton Elementary. If anyone that's frequent at that school, you'll know that that park a lot, sidewalk area isn't disrepaired, so we added that into the capital plan, and that's currently under design and projected to be started on this summer when school's up. We have a minor, Sturgis Park Bank stabilization. Anyone who does some ice skating out on that ice skating rink over there, a few years ago, we had a blowout of the bank, and did a temporary repair on that. This would be a more permanent fix in stabilizing the whole bank area. That's currently also under design.
Is that where the dam is, that you actually gave up?
There's a portion that's over there that's eroded, and then if you go further down that ditch, right where the head wall is, we have an old head wall, that stuff will fall down, it was made of granite block, so the repairs will be done in both areas. Next is a, a major project, part of our master capital plan for our water improvements. Probably one of the last big ones that we had to do in this group is the Main Street and Mill Street water main cleaning and lining. Roughly 14,000 linear fee, projected cost around 3.5 million. This is currently under design with one of our consultants. It will go from Salem Street to Mill Street. Mill Street will go from Main Street to the town line. We needed to do this regardless of whether or not we were supplying one or two other The additional, there'll also be an additional 30-foot section down on South Main Street Park, where we had a culvert crossing that needs to be done, to be completed down there. It's important to note on, on a lot of these capital projects, with the exception of the first two, we have hired out for engineering services, both for design and for inspectional services, and we also had a lot of projects this year where we had a lot of engineering services with a decrease of staff that we had. Charles Street Sewer Pump Station is the third pump station in line with our sewer capital. We've finished Batch Alder and West Street Sewer Pump Station, dispatched here. Charles Street is a major sewer pump station. It services approximately 1,000 properties. It's roughly 40 feet deep.
Where's that pump located?
It's located at the intersection of Charles and Hable Street in that aisle there.
Can that triangle?
Correct. Correct. It goes down about 40 feet, was in severe disrepair.
It's like, it's like a nightmare. You're just trying to go down there. I mean, I've been down, like, towards the big area, it's...
I don't think you need to go into full detail.
No, I don't think I do either, but it's just, anyway, it's well, needs to be done.
So what was going on there this summer was, were we figuring it out what was going on? 'Cause there was, there was project going on.
We had construction located at Batch Alder and Hable Street, which was one of our other pump stations, which was in worse condition than this one.
So were you using that as a staging area? 'Cause there was equipment there, good part of the summer.
Over the summer, there was some equipment down on that.
I think it was...
'Cause it all got reseeded, and, you know...
Yeah, I believe that was maybe a few summers ago? I don't, I don't remember.
We have it together, yeah.
We will be using it as a staging area when we do this trial.
That's what we did.
It may be when we did it.
Maybe when we did Hable Street, I think that might have been, that was a couple years ago, we'll use that as a staging area.
Ryan, a quick go back on the water main. That's a 24-inch main above?
No, that is a 12-inch cast iron main, unlined. It's probably important to note that this will help address some of the nitrification issue that we've had in town, so it's important that we do the cleaning and lining on this piece. This is a crucial piece to our improvements.
Well, the only portion that gets replaced is the intersections.
Correct. All the intersections and new water surfaces.
Thank you.
That's probably the original main water line that came out from Mill Street Pump Station in 1890.
Is your name on this one?
No. I wasn't in the...
There's actually, that water main is 1890. It was, it's cast right into the side of the main.
Made in the US of A. Yes, Mark. Sorry, I don't mean to ignore you, I just have this question, just to have a little space.
Thank you. You mentioned that even without the new activities that are going to happen to North Redding and the expansion of M W R A water, we need to do this. But is the service on this gonna be much heavier as a result of servicing other communities? And if so, is there...
If there was a, just if there was a potential, if there was a potential of another customer joining the M W R A, then service would increase through the town of Redding.
That project is unlikely to happen, I suppose, I think.
Well, it's a put-off for a year.
Would this project be any different, would this project be any different under a scenario of North Redding joining M W R A?
Uh, no. The design would have changed.
Yes, was it, this is, this was in the works before.
Yeah. Further answer to Mr. Dox's question, in a negotiation with another community, we would be allowed to collect a fee for wear and tear, a reasonable fee for that.
Wheeling charge.
Wheels.
Thank you.
Another big project, currently under design, I believe the construction cost may be projected a little further out than FY19, would be the replacement of the August Street water tank. Currently, we have some failing tanks, some structural defects on the tank, some ocean ocean violations. So those would be things that we need to fix, repair, and replace. And in doing so, we'll be replacing the tank with a composite elevated tank, which would be constructed mainly out of concrete base and then a last few steel tank on the top.
Does that price estimate assume we have relocated all the electronic transmitters to the new tower? So they're already off and that's been dealt with otherwise?
That price is for the tank replacement only.
Yeah. So the answer is yes. That's just the tank.
So I know that the neighbors came in in a prior select meeting and we sort of talked about a neighborhood community process. You mentioned that we're in design. Have we gone back out? Have we talked to folks?
This is, this is the design for the Auburn Street Water Tank replacement only. This has nothing to do with-
With the tower?
With any talk about a cell tower or what we're going to do with the cell company. Regardless, this tank has to be replaced. So that process is taking place. It will be replaced in place where it is now.
Same height?
Same height. The shape will just be slightly different to a more modern.
We're doing a site analysis now, right, to start that process.
Correct.
But it is true, Ryan, that any future plan that linked the cell towers to the water tank is not part of this project. In other words, it's not comprehended in the scope of order?
At some point, there may be a crossover. At this point, there's not. The design can work separate from-
Okay. Doesn't preclude, doesn't preclude anything?
No. When we get into that conversation of what happens with the carriers, then at that point, either the design for the tank will reflect what we do-
Okay.
-or we'll go a separate route.
Okay.
But we are going to include the neighbors in that discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to be clear on that.
Emerald Drive Water Booster Pump Station. This is an interesting scenario. We have two booster pump stations right next to each other, one on both groups and one on Emerald Drive. We're proposing to eliminate one of the pump stations, booster stations, and upgrade and replace the Emerald Drive Water Booster Station and do some distribution work. We can boost the whole area with one station, reducing our operation costs, maintenance costs, and energy costs. And also actually including this into our SCADA, which is our computerized system. So we'll have better control over it. We will continue with our unidirectional flushing program, which has been a success. Started it this year. We have projected out thirty thousand annually for that.
Can you explain that a little more?
Instead of the conventional, we open up a fire hydrant, let it just flush from both directions from the main. What we do is we strategically operate and close and open certain valves. So we're getting flow in only one direction of the water main, thereby increasing the velocity of the main. So we can scour the inside of the pipe at a greater rate.
So again, the thought is to try to knock off any of the growths from the cast iron that might have made their way in?
Correct. Correct. We do by higher velocities, we're able to scour more off. The tricky part is to get the right velocity, not too fast, because we don't want to scour too much of it. Reading is, we've just been putting together our first M D E P sewer I I annual report. And it's interesting to know, and it's something that Reading should be proud about, is that we're very involved in our I N I removal. We have been since going back at least nineteen ninety-eight, if not further.
Again, inflow is the illegal connections to the sanitary sewer from-
Exactly.
-grange. Infiltration is breakage in the pipes.
Exactly.
Seepage in the pipes.
Exactly. Exactly. So that being said, we utilize all of the loan grant money that we get from the M W R A. And as of today, I believe we've spent well over four point six million or somewhere around that in money from the M W R A. This project is the last allotment that we have from the M W R A. It is two allotments, nine and ten, which totaled out to one point six million. And we just went up the bid for the second half of that phase, the eight hundred and forty-four thousand.
Are we still collecting mitigation monies from large-scale developments to help with the I N I?
Yes, as part of what we need to do for I N I, we encourage a four-to-one removal. And in doing so, we do that with that sewer connection, I N I.
Ryan, is this focused on one or two areas in the town that are noteworthy, or is this kind of a sprinkle across the town?
So through the years, we've done flow monitoring, smoke testing, dye testing, TV, television inspection, testing the ceiling throughout the town. So we can really pinpoint where our problem is. Yeah, we're going to optimize the most amount and get the most inflow and infiltration out.
So all this, all this capital is within our own capital plan, not the enterprise?
No, some of it's in the enterprise.
It's a combination.
And now we're getting into the roads and the sidewalk. Sidewalk construction's yearly a hundred thousand dollars. Did that was your same increase?
Yeah.
We have a matrix that determines where we do sidewalk projects. Pavement markings is also part of that that also increased.
Yeah.
And that's the line painting that we do.
Can you explain what just happened with the yellow ones?
I can. I can. I'm sure everyone-
Everybody's asking.
Is it latex versus oil? Was that the problem?
No, no. From what we can gather, the paint company has been very cooperative. It was, whether there's a temperature fluctuation where they had some moisture on the ground. We've painted in that temperature before. We've painted in that timeframe before, where we have a couple hours before rain comes in. The paint is supposed to dry well before that. We had paint that went down at nine thirty in some areas, and by twelve thirty, it was still wet. And this is hours before we had any temperature change or weather change. So the company's looking into why that had happened, whether it's a paint failure or this, you know, an application error. But they will be coming back in the spring and repainting that.
And no charge?
Will be charged when they come back. Not, we didn't get charged for this one.
Okay.
It's atypical. It doesn't happen. We don't see-
First time I can ever remember.
Yeah, we don't see a failure like that.
And we've used this company before?
Yes. They're reputable. They're, again, they've been very cooperative in coming back and doing work in the spring. And it's important to note that D B W made the decision not to come back and do work right before the winter. We have salt that's just on the ground now. We'd be stacking the chips against us and probably causing another issue with repainting. So we'll be back in the spring. We have visible center lines down there now. Everyone's safe. So we'll be back in the spring with a nice first center line.
Basically, two companies that do the service of the whole state, so it's-
Yeah. And then on to our, one of our big programs that we do is the road resurfacing program. This is a combination of local funding and chapter ninety. Last year, we did around one point two million. This year, because we had a little leftover chapter ninety, we're probably up around one point three million. We have a projected list of streets below. Funding, depending on funding, these are the streets that we will be doing in the spring, summer of two thousand and eighteen. We do get another allotment of chapter ninety in the spring. So we'll have another list that comes out for the possibly fall or spring.
Ryan, remind us what the number, the annual spend number was to kind of break even or stay even in terms of road condition. Is that the one point three?
It was just about one point three, correct?
Yeah. One point six, you're going to make progress. And if it's just, just use your chapter ninety, you have six hundred, you're going backwards.
One point three leaves us right at that PCI seventy-seven, where we're at now. We make no increase, but we do not decrease. And that's projected out for five years.
I've just got the follow-up. Yeah, it's the, no, no. It's, we talked about this a very little bit. I just want to kind of just show this. This is FY eighteen. Going out with our solid waste disposal recycling program, we're still percentage-wise, you know, hovering around twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent. So it's still pretty good. This is FY seventeen. Actually, ended up, I think, around thirty percent.
Can you back up Jeff real quick? Some interesting numbers.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just get the headers back in.
Sure.
That's the paper. There's the cobingled recycled material. Then you get the total, then you get the rubbish disposal and the tonnage, and then the percent recycled of the total tonnage.
Keeps going up?
Yeah. So that, that number represents sort of the, what percentage the recycling material is of the total material. But it doesn't talk about the percentage of people who participate. So-
Right.
Well, that's a hundred percent. That's a hundred percent?
They don't get the trash picked up.
You know, the bylaw, I mean, people don't have the recycling out there. And we don't get a lot of those. Occasionally, I'll still get a call that, you know, my trash was picked up. And I said, do you have your recycling out? And he said, yeah, I had it out of them. Also, we have people taking pictures sometimes, and sometimes things aren't always as they should be. But in general, in general, the community's been really good. And I think it's reflected in the percentages. And again, this is, as far as communities that don't have page to throw, this is really high.
This is really a moment to be celebrated. If you had stopped anyone fifteen years ago and said, what do you think that ceiling would be on recycling? I can't imagine you would get numbers like, you know, we're approaching one-third, right, of total waste volume by weight?
By weight.
Being recycled. That's, that's really remarkable. And the trajectory is still up on the order of a percent a year. That's really amazing.
This is just, this is just on the entirety, FY seventeen. And again, I think the total, if you go down to the end, it's around thirty percent.
Wow, it's a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay. So that's still, that was very good.
February and March.
Christmas birth.
Christmas birth, yeah. Christmas recycled-
All the boxes.
Right. And everything, I mean, everything's on the website in terms of what's recyclable, what's not. I mean, everything is outlined. And again, we've been doing this for a period of time now. And a high, high percentage of the people really, again, give all the residents credit. I mean, they really-
That's amazing.
-participate and do a good job.
That is amazing.
And I still have my plaque on my office of the municipal recycler of the year, based on, the year we went from, I think sixteen percent, it was made out of recycled material. But we went from like sixteen percent to like thirty percent, I mean, one year, just because of the enforcement of the mandatory recycle.
Have any idea where Reading is relative to, you know, we always do our peer rankings. Do you have any idea where we are relative to peers in the cycle? It's not important, but it's an interesting number.
Yeah. Again, for a community with non-page to throw, I mean, I think there are a couple of communities that do a little bit better. I know Gloss is one of them. But, you know, they have page to throw. You're going to buy your bags, you know, two bucks a bag. And that's a whole different, you know, incentive program. But we are, but we're at the very top of the, of that non-page to throw communities.
That's fantastic.
Just to, next slide is on the highway. Yeah, we talked a little bit about this earlier, and I just stuck a little dump myself on there. But again, just as far as the changes in the department, I mean, you could just see, I'm not going to go through each one, but just in general, I mean, sort of the last five years, with our supervisor retired and promotions, and we were right down the line through highway. We fired new people coming in. And again, it's a trickle effect usually. If, you know, people move up as promotions, as people retire, people move up. Parks and Forestry, same thing. That's, you know, we have the retirement. There's actually two people retired in the cemetery, Bob Keating, supervisor, and then Phil Jordan, a longtime former retired. And again, people are moving up. Water Division, same thing. Jimmy Richardson retired, and Peter Isbell moved up to supervisor. And then Peter Cass who was the water supply supervisor, those are the five supervisors over the last five years that have been replaced. Well, there's four. And then the next slide will just show the engineering with Ryan, with previous designers who retired. So I think the point is here, it's just that there's been a lot of changeover. And the town's really in a good position in that we do a really good job. And I've tried to maintain an aggressive professional development program. People, to have these promotions, the people who do that, they've got to have the qualifications. They've got to, for water, they've got to have your D two license or D three. You have your Class A license to move on the highway. So people do that, but the town, you know, steps up to the plate. I mean, we provide training, we provide, we pay for the licenses, we provide them to go during the day. So, I mean, it's worth the town to do that, also the employee benefit. So I think my professional development budget is fifteen, twenty thousand, maybe something.
Not next year.
Well, maybe. So far, so good. But I mean, but I mean, that obviously puts us in a position where we can, you know, do this. So-
So your workforce seems like it was, it was an aging workforce. And now, what would you say your median age is?
A lot less.
Might have gone down by fifteen years.
Well, the experience walked out the door.
Not supposed to talk about age.
That's true. It's obviously much younger.
Money saving you do.
You lost a lot of thirty plus.
The civil engineer positions, one or two are old.
Bobby?
Up there, talks about civil engineer.
Going back to two thousand, since two thousand and sixteen, there's a senior civil position that is available, that's open, the minority position.
Right.
It was an assistant civil position, which we lost one of the engineers. And we also lost an engineering aide.
So have we not filled those because budgeting caused that to happen? Or did we not fill those because we can't fill them?
Part of, part of that is true. The latter would be the open senior position has been difficult to fill for compensation reasons.
If there was one position, one of, really, I think assistant civil was a budget, budget.
Along with the engineering aide.
As well as engineering aide. Those two were budget.
And are we looking for that to come back in? Was that one of the, one of the-
It was one of the requests.
One of the requests, yeah. And again, I, you know, I mean, Bob was, his instructions are pretty clear. Don't be shy. He said, as far as, you know, requesting things that, you know, really, we had a number of years ago, we lost.
That was the idea of the exercise. But it strikes me that we'll probably, if we could fill those positions, we'd probably save money compared to what we're doing outsourcing.
Ryan talked about outsourcing.
Yeah.
Some things you'll always-
Some things we're always going to outsource.
Line tanning, that kind of thing.
But you certainly have a benefit to having in-house staff.
Would be interesting to quantify that. Would be interesting to know, I realize that you're always going to have outsourcing. I mean, that just kind of stands to reason that you can't be internally everything to every project. I get that. It would be interesting to know, you know, maybe what we need to do is rethink what we're paying. If that's really the, if that's the hurdle. Because if that's the hurdle, and, you know, so just to keep it simple, you know, if we're paying twenty thousand, and we should be paying thirty thousand, and we raise the starting compensation, and it saves us twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand of outsourcing. I mean, I'm using ridiculous numbers, but the point is, it'd be interesting to quantify that, you know. Sometimes, the most expensive thing you do is save money.
Right. That's true. John, one of the complications from a further distance, obviously, than these two is, we have a capital plan. To some degree, we can sort of assess the manpower needed to execute a capital plan, more or less. And a lot of it's on the engineers. They have to watch what is done and supervise. What's very difficult is to know, when is the gas company coming in? When is the M W R A really going to do their project? When is the state going to do West Street? That's so hard to predict the timing of. And that work in the recent two years was much larger than our work. So it's hard to know what the right staff level is, I guess. Your point's certainly well taken.
Yeah. A general question, Jeff, back to your five point seven percent projected increase in F T Es. How much of that is divided? It looked like it was mostly seasonal labor. I would assume that's mostly against the tax levy, not against the enterprise accounts?
Correct.
So none of that five point seven, the additional is against?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
It's all tax levy.
Yep. Just a couple of quick slides I thought that you might be interested in. See Click Fix is still alive and well. Where, this just gives you a kind of look at a little summary for almost a year. There's a number of requests that have come in. And, you know, it's a tool that obviously I think people utilize, you know, to call in certain issues and so forth. I've got the number of categories there that we could take a look at. They come in various ways. They come in over on the website, or they come in by phone, they'll come in by phone call. But those are the different categories that come in, from potholes to general questions, is tree branches, snow and ice. So I think, in general, it's, my personal opinion is I think it's a good system. It's not the end-all, be-all. I think there's a lot of things that we're not capturing, that we get a lot of phone calls, like during the day, that at this point, you know, we're not entering there. So I think some of the numbers may be skewed a little bit, that, you know, these come in by formal mechanisms. But sometimes, we may not be capturing, I guess, all the requests and all the things that come in. So I'm not sure what, I think part of the answer to that might be is maybe a staff situation where, you know, where we have a certain line coming in, where every caller, every caller comes in, goes with this person, and then it gets distributed so we can log that requesting whatever it is. I don't know. Something I'm going to talk with Bob about in terms of going forward with it. But it's still being- it's still being utilized and I think, um, you know, um, it's, it's a tool that, again, customer service wise, I guess is the main thing.
So Jeff, is this a, is this a combination of click it, fix it and phone calls?
Yes.
Is that, that's everything?
This is everything, yes.
Can you wind that back to the head of this place?
Sure.
So.
Request source, different sources, uh, not the real, but I think it's on the web, phone, uh, city, city oriented, you know, we get, if we get a call, a phone call, um, at the highway garage, we'll log that in for, say for a pothole and so forth, so we'll put that in, so we're trying to capture everything that comes in to get a, I guess, a true picture of the volume and the scope.
Does it work better when they, when they click it, you know, when they?
Uh, I think it tracks it.
It seems like, anecdotally, you hear.
It tracks it, they get a response, it comes back, correct, yeah, I think that.
That seems to be getting, that you hear over and over, people are like in stark amazement of how well that works, but it's like they expect it to go into a black hole and it doesn't, um, when they use that, that web application.
Jeff, can you tell how many people are actually downloaded in Reading, you must get those numbers from the company.
I don't think so.
I'm sure we did.
If we can ask them.
Yeah, it's a question I could find out.
I'm just curious, how many people here have C-click Fix on your phone?
I've used.
I'd say that's about fifteen percent.
Of people here.
Less than that, yeah. So I, I think we would use, I mean, the fact that, the people here are probably the most engaged folks in town and, and I saw maybe, maybe one out of five, so, you know, the fact that maybe we're not advertising its availability, um, is maybe, you know, we'd get more usage if people do it, so.
We're also looking to integrate C-click Fix, C-click Fix into our GIS system as far as the WorkAuto software.
Good idea.
We've made some steps just recently, a recent proposal that we, we signed to set that groundwork, to get that ready for us, so, once we set that WorkAuto system up, we'll be managing through the WorkAuto system and taking calls in by C-click Fix to integrate into the WorkAuto system, so that's down the road, I don't know how far down the road, but that's part of the projected plan.
What is the meaning to days to acknowledge, is that the day the, the petitioner gets a response back, is that what that means?
Sounds long.
Their, their fourth header?
Yeah.
Fifth header?
Days to acknowledge?
Yeah, that's.
Is that the one you're hearing?
Yeah, what does that mean?
Uh, that would, my guess would be, that would be from the moment that it's clicked on to the moment that it's either.
They get a response.
It's either changed from the open status to the acknowledged status, and I, speaking in the engineering standpoint, some of those don't get transferred over to open to acknowledged until we actually know what the issue is, so you'll, you'll have a delay, um, on some with the potholes, I don't know that, why.
Scroll down a bit, just keep your eye on that call, so one of them there, you got forty, under manhole catch basin, you have forty-seven days to acknowledge.
That's, so, we have, the, the short answer would be, depending on who's monitoring their C-click Fix, uh, they might like to keep it in an open status to make sure that they still see it.
Oh, it's a way to track it.
As opposed to acknowledging it and keep it in the acknowledged category.
Right.
Almost as keeping a unread email.
Yeah.
Some of them, actually, they wrote to be paid and we get back to them saying, well, okay, uh, you know, look at it, prioritize, so that, you know, it may take a while to do that, but they may wanna keep that open, I wanna keep that open until it, something happens, which could be X period of time.
Because when you, when you put something, when you click something in here, within a day, you get a, an email that says, your, your thing has been assigned to.
Right.
So-and-so, and then when it's resolved, um, you also get.
Yep.
An email and acknowledgement, so, um, I think it's, I think we need to do a better job of, um, you know, maybe this is one of the things to go out on the, on our website one day, take ten seconds, people will have their phone, have a time, take ten seconds now and download it, it's free, C-click Fix. The more people who use it, and the more people who have it, the more people who use it, the more people who use it, the more customer service will happen.
It'd actually be in the iPhone app or the Google Play.
Yeah, so it's in the, it's in the, it's in the App Store, I think.
You know, there was some publicity about it, probably send a refresh of publicity, you know, I think that's, it's as simple as that.
I never heard of it.
C-click Fix.
Yep.
C-click.
Literally what happens.
And the, the cost is fixed, right, they don't charge us for how many users we have, so, right, may as well.
Yeah, just looking at the, just looking at the phone, there's only fifty thousand instances been downloaded on Android, so it's not high usage. Bob, do you have a question?
Just a comment, just to clear, this program is used in a lot of departments, Jeans Department Frings is using it, and I will say when we centralized a lot of the work you see here into a permits coordinator, the numbers tidied themselves up a little, shall we say, so it's one thing for people doing the work to respond, it's another thing for the paperwork to catch up to that, and when you're relying on people in the field to do the paperwork, obviously the priority is the work in the field, so, you know, as Jeff mentioned earlier, another clerical position potentially could help tidy up this rate of numbers a little bit more.
And just, uh, certainly takes some more time, but, uh, the, just one final slide, this is, uh, this is something, uh, new application, we started, uh, two thousand and seventeen, we began tracking our catch basin, uh, cleaning operation using a custom build application. The operator enters real-time data during the process of cleaning and inspecting the catch basins, the data is captured to assist us in responding to requirements of the NIPD's and MS4 permit and in providing essential information needed for repairs and maintenance. So basically, um, he goes out, um, and inspects, we have, that, obviously, it's fifty-one percent, so we've got about thirty, four hundred catch basins in terms of, in the whole town, and he'll go to each individual one and do the analysis of each one, um, and check the condition and log it in in real time.
That's a, that's a PM once a year kind of thing?
This is.
It's part of the permit, actually.
It's part of our MS4 permit that we're supposed to be cleaning, we, we clean them manually anyway, but as part of our MS4 permit, we also need to track where we take out.
Yeah.
This was, this was a, a big victory, I think, for DPW and, and we have many apps that we utilize in GIS, this is a big one, this is, um, we're starting to collect some real-time data that's really gonna be able to help us, uh, with our operations for highway, but also track where we're taking out and quantify it, um, and help assess for the next year's permit and what we need to do.
That's all I have.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public, Mark?
Thank you, guys, I love the, the, the click fix, anyway, we're curious.
C-click Fix.
C-click Fix, thank you. Um, one request, the, um, the sheet you had up there that listed kind of the changes in people, environments, promotions and things like that, it would be great if, as part of this Excel spreadsheet, you could just kind of have, like, the, I don't wanna call it FTE, but looking at, you've got some seasonal people and other things like that, Andy was asking that question also, if we could just see it that way, it'll just summarize it really easily across all the departments and that way you just have a better feel.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hear the comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now to the part where I summarize by starting with something called the pillars of modern society.
You're rocking philosophical.
Yes.
Let me sit back.
This is actually a professor, a Northwest friend of mine, that tried, it was quite a lot in the world, and, you know, he and others in his field say that these are the four most important things that a modern society does in importance, in order of importance. Security, education, infrastructure are things that, you know, local government and schools directly touch, um, healthcare, you know, we, we certainly have some social, emotional work done in the schools and the town, so we touch that area, but it's not the way it's directed to touch. In order to balance this budget, you've seen, I'll give you some details tonight, I'm gonna reread that first bullet point, actually twice, for the first time, I, I recognize that I have to take a defensive posture about risk, um, and that's now more important to me than the services offered to the community, I'm gonna say that again, I recognize that risk to the organization is more important than the services we offer, and we are a service organization, so that's a pretty powerful statement. And I have to tell you that I don't think that statement has ever been made in Reading in twenty-five years.
What do you mean by risk?
I'll get into that. Um, the last override successfully, um, thirteen hundred years ago, I was on the Finance Committee during that period, um, things were very tough for two or three years before that, I don't mean to suggest I warned, risk was never recognized as an important thing, so for instance, capital was slashed.
Yeah.
That was a huge risk to the organization, so no one ever said, wait a minute, we have to stop doing some things, we have to preserve capital or infrastructure, um, I think it's important to draw the line in the sand now and just make it real clear, the FY nineteen budget, you will see, will just have a certain flavor of that, but without additional revenue FY twenty, I'm very much expecting, um, optional services that do not fall into the category of security, education and infrastructure to be removed, and I would say very candidly and very publicly, um, in FY twenty, the municipal government will be prepared to cut some services and help fund the schools, um, because it can't continue if you're gonna preserve those top three things. Lastly, and a, and a theme you've seen throughout the presentation is, we have to, we have no choice but to recognize, we're in very, very strong labor markets and the employees we have are our greatest asset and turnover of those employees is our greatest foe, um, it is not easy to hire people right now into municipal government, it's a time in the economy where that's not a very interesting job, stability of employment, which municipal government tends to offer, is not as interesting in the economy so far, um, some of our departments have had trouble filling positions such as, um, two that you heard about tonight, sometimes it's money, sometimes it's not money, um, DPW is a good example, the schools are a better example, where, um, the millennials are coming into the workforce, even for us now, slower in the municipal government side certainly, but DPW has seen more of it.
Could use the mic more.
Oh, sure. I don't know if it's gonna help.
Yeah, it will if you talk.
Let's get it close.
Yeah.
Um, I don't often like to be general, but I will be general in this case, that millennials that we've experienced and certainly that you know about are less interested in money and more interested in time off, for instance, so this is an issue we've discussed and you heard earlier with, with police especially, um, the chief has for the first time had to order people in for overtime and details, that's never happened in Reading's history because no one's interested in that extra money, so as an organization, we have to really take a careful look at ourselves and recognize the fact that the nature of our employees are going to change, it's quite possible that the same amount of work, because of the lack of interest in overtime and details, will take more employees, that's an unfortunate but could be factually true. Um, the culture of, of our entire organization is excellent, I will tell you personally that the most satisfying thing I have in the twelve years I've worked here is when an angry customer comes into the building yelling about how stupid the employees are in town government, and if they spend some time with us, they leave realizing that's not true, they dealt with me and other people and they realize, you guys aren't so bad. So, you know, the perception out there is still pretty poor for the type of employee we are, government workers, you know, good enough for government work, uh, Reading really does have exceptional workers, you've, you've heard some of that in the presentations for the last two weeks, um, so this, this is a really, HR is a really important area for us, um, we have to recognize that we have to stay competitive in pay and competitive in benefits as we experience turnover. Now, here's the much awaited FTE chart, and it's not gonna match anything you saw before, I'll tell you why, um, there are departments that have full-time employees that work forty-two hours a week, forty hours a week and thirty-seven and a half hours a week, depending on their job, I don't, I don't call them all one FTE, um, I normalized everything to thirty-seven and a half hours that you saw, so that's what this chart is, so it's not gonna match what you heard, so the best example is facilities, if Joe Huggins was to stand up and then line up the employees and they were counting off, there's only eleven people, ten of them work forty hours, one of them works thirty-seven and a half, that's eleven point seven FTEs measured in the thirty-seven and a half hour a week, which is our most common work week, so I thought this was much purer math, but it doesn't necessarily count the people, um, you see an increase of about twenty FTEs from the current year's budget to the next year's budget as requested by department heads, um, seven of those positions were cut in the last couple of years, thirteen of those positions have been requested almost every year for many years, and I'm gonna come back to that shortly, um, and again, you can see some departments didn't, didn't request any increase in FTEs, the department you just finished, Jeff, uh, I calculated as one clerk and point seven of all the seasonals added up together, plus one person going from thirty-seven and a half to forty hours, um, the one category of employees who I purposely left out, because it's just too hard to calculate, is election workers, if there's one election versus three election, there's a bit of a difference in FTEs, I don't think that's really a sort of a sustainable workforce that we care about. I think you've heard this also, but I really wanna make a point of it, um, there's a million dollars of revenue that comes into the general fund specifically for the town government from enterprise funds, that's water, sewer, stormwater and the light department, you can see that three departments are impacted by this, um, as I look at positions in the general fund to eliminate, I have to consider this because I might be eliminating revenue, so I might not be recognizing the full saving you see in the budget, I have to be honest with you that ten or fifteen years ago, I liked the way we budgeted better, on one page you could see the salaries and you could see the offsets at the bottom of the page, so you can see the net to the town, um, that's how town meeting used to vote it, and then the DOR told us that many years ago, cut it out, that's not what we want, we want town meeting to vote the actual total salary of the employee, and then if you lose the revenue too bad, you've told the taxpayers what that employee costs, um, so this is a little less transparent now, the million dollars shows up in some of our worksheets as a revenue, it's directed exactly to the town in these manners as you see, um, but I just wanna remind you that not all departments' FTEs are created equal in terms of balancing budget, that's my main point, um, and to sort of elaborate on that, I know some questions have come up along these issues, um, we don't charge the school department, we could, it doesn't really make any sense, it's another layer of bureaucracy, um, probably, um, thirty percent of the finance department is work done for the schools specifically, uh, that obviously is not the assessor's office or the collector's office, but very much paid them, so, you know, if we were to cross out this purely on the town side and add the schools as, as a support number, that number would grow, it doesn't matter, we're all kind of, you know, one group, it's, it's not important, but it is important to recognize that some of the work the town government does hits all aspects of the organization, it's not just town hall talking itself, it's town hall dealing with the entire organization. Here's the magic number you've been waiting for, that's what I need to cut in the budget, that figure at the bottom is a million and a half dollars, and I'm gonna come back to that and surprise you.
Is that based on the presentations that we had today?
That's based on the presentations you saw, um, the number at the bottom, the ninety-five hundred dollars I have to cut from accommodated costs is a cemetery item, not a big deal, a million four eighty-six is what I need to cut from the general fund, and, you know, it's not easy to just say, and I do wanna come back to that number, I think it's a very fair statement to say that no two of us tonight would balance these budgets identically, but we would have some core agreement, I don't know how large that core agreement would be, but there would be something, um, we, and I, and by that I also mean, mean to, to say myself, I need to rely on the professional staff expertise that we have, you heard it over the last two weeks, um, for example, we have inside information such as planned retirements that you can't know, sometimes we do things in the budgets that might make you scratch your head and six months later you understand, and that's something, obviously, we can't talk about, um, you know, you do know that as a philosophy at town hall, every time there's turnover, we study the position and figure out if there's a better way to do it or a different way to do it, obviously, if a firefighter, a police officer or DPW employee leave, they're pretty much gonna be replaced by someone similar, um, a town hall with lots of unique jobs. Town Hall with lots of unique jobs, we try to split up to work differently as we honestly were running the opportunities. This public process, as I said to a couple of you at the end of the last meeting, has helped change my mind, actually, and shaped some ideas. And what it's really done more than anything else is brought the idea of risk to the forefront of my day. It's easy to balance budgets every year when you just don't really do a zero-based budget. You kind of think you do, but you don't really. This exercise has been particularly helpful for me in that regard. Not surprisingly, I've had a draft list of a million and a half in cuts for some time. It has changed. Over the next two weeks, I'll be meeting with individual department and assistant department heads, just two-on-one, if you will. I will release the final budget in early January of 2018, at the same time the superintendent does. I was asked some questions about that, and I don't have any strong opinions, but just for some history, again, going back ten years and more, the schools used to release a budget in the first week of December, and the town looked again, they were working January. More recently, for the last five or six or seven years, they've done the same as us in January. Someone had asked me that question, so I just wanted to clarify. At your meeting on January ninth, I'll review the budget in public and provide you at that time a prioritized detailed list of everything that was eliminated from the budget, let's say five thousand dollars enough. I won't go into the smaller ones. And I'll put them in an order, a priority order, of if you want to have an add-back as a basis for an override discussion, you'll see that list. If it's a wage, I'll add some sort of benefit cost to go along with it, and so will the schools. I think we've settled on twenty-five percent is close enough. I want to also address what was different this year. You meant December instead of January. That's pretty obvious. None of us got a shot in that one. We presented to you unbalanced budgets with no balanced budgets. That was different. But I have to show you some things from two years ago. And the reason I'm picking two years ago is last year, we had just had a failed override. So, I'm going to show you something I've done for several years I did not do last year out of respect for the voters. It was something that went out to the Finance Committee, was shared with the selectmen, and ultimately the town meeting, which was a discussion of what was not funded. Look at that, two years ago, a million and a half. Same exact discussion we're having tonight. Some of the details have changed. We listed all the positions in order and had a small discussion of them. My point is, the information that was presented to you this year was virtually the same as it's been in other years. A number of people have said to me, "I like the way the budget are being done this way. You're doing it much differently." That's a communications improvement, in my estimation. It's not a difference in material covered or presented. And that's good. That's an excellent result. I think we're communicating better because you're going to listen a lot more when you don't see a balanced budget and then just leap to the fact, "Oh, I don't need to look at the stuff that wasn't funded because it mustn't be very important." This gave you more of a framework of, you decide from yourself, and again, everyone will be different about what's not, what's the least important of the things I just heard. All of it's important. I have a really difficult time looking at anything on the list and just saying frivolous. I'm sure some of you would have an easier time doing that, but there's not much. It's particularly concerning that in public safety, the request is for nine additional staff in terms of uniformed officers and firefighters. That brings us up to average. That doesn't bring us up to our historic average from many years ago. And in my estimation, with all due respect to the chief, it doesn't bring us up to where we should be for the geography we live in. Ten miles from Boston, we're near a very busy two interchanges, in a high crime area in terms of between Boston and Lawrence. We happen to be in the middle of that. Thankfully, it skips over us. We're a safe community, but we're not necessarily in a safe geography, is the clearest thing I can say. I would prefer to be an above-average-staffed, public safety community if that were possible. And the things you've heard in the last two weeks are only to bring us up to average, which is obviously an improvement. So, I just thought it would be important for you to see that, again, the information is not significantly different in the past. It's been presented differently, and I believe it has absolutely been heard differently, which is good. Communication's better. I think that's probably the main lesson we got from the failed override a year and a half ago, which we need to improve our communication. I'll close by citing some meetings that remain. The week of January eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh will be quite busy for anyone actually interested in all this, specifically in terms of the selectmen. Right now, there's an agenda item for nine o'clock on the ninth to discuss this balanced budget. We have a public hearing on Article III licenses at eight o'clock that was continued, that must continue at that time, and it must be held at Town Hall. As I have an opportunity to have some flexibility on that nine o'clock start, I will. I just don't know how long your license discussion will take, and I don't want to mislead people taking the walk-in on that when they're expecting a budget discussion. The financial forum has tentatively, and for quite some time, been listed as the twenty-fourth. The school committee is voting a balanced budget, I believe, on the eighteenth, although their schedule has changed here and there. On February first, I formally turn over a balanced budget for the town and schools to the Finance Committee, and they begin their work. And they will be beginning their work one month earlier than usual. It's usually March first, sometimes the last week of February. And they graciously agreed to compress their schedule, as the selectmen did, to two meetings a week, which will be difficult. And they will finish, therefore, on February fifteenth, which is about five or six weeks earlier than they normally finish in order to get information out there. I'm expecting, and it's on the selectmen's calendar, a meeting on January thirtieth. And the only agenda item right now is an override discussion, if you wish to have it. I would certainly hope by that time you'll have a full list from me and from the schools about what has been requested, and we can have that discussion with other elected boards. To remind the community, April third is the election, which may or may not contain an override question. And April twenty-third is when the budget goes to town meeting, and that discussion begins. So, I want to conclude with just a statement that this is a tough time of year, and I really appreciate the selectmen particularly taking five meetings in the last nine days, I think, and for the community that's come out and shown some interest. And it always surprises me, all the people that are watching at home. So, thank you for that. We're always committed to being transparent. When we're not transparent, it's not because we don't intend to be, it's because we don't always know the best way. Sometimes our lack of transparency is because we deluge people with way more information than they can digest. And I'm the guiltiest of that. I have a hard time sometimes boiling something down to something really simple when I know it's not simple. So, again, I've said this for years, suggestions on improved communication are most welcome. George has been very helpful in that regard, especially when he suddenly jumped in kind of new to this whole process. That's exactly what we needed. Jane Miller on our staff has been very helpful working with George. She's also really a communication expert. She's the one that, if you will, emceed the meeting at the high school library. And I think the process this year, by design, I guess I'll say, really did improve the communication. You know, I would be interested tonight to hear from the board members what you thought of the process, whether you feel, especially respectfully, Andy, for those that have been through it before, whether you feel better informed than you did a year or two ago. And then from Andy, I'm particularly interested in how you felt as a new selectman. And we can have that discussion tonight or around the night. But those are the things I'm interested to hear from you folks. And to be clear, any of your comments, questions, suggestions are more than welcome. Please get them in by early in the first week of January. I need to balance the budget and send a queue on the fourth. So, the soonest you can get comments, the mean, the better. As I said, I'm meeting with the department heads and the assistant departments over the next two weeks. That will continue probably till January second or third. And at that point, we'll have the budget balanced. I will tell you that new things that were suggested, if you will, whether they were cut off before or whether they were added, might well take precedence over something that exists in this budget. I'm trying my best not to eliminate filled positions. I always try that. I can't say for sure I will accomplish that, but I sincerely hope to. But just because something was done in the past does not mean it will go forward in this community. That will be most apparent in FY20, when I believe we have to take a hard look at the services that, you know, it's Redding. Sometimes Redding doesn't know how well it has in some services, but we just don't have to offer these things. It's not a mandatory thing for town government to do. I really don't want to get into details. But if you look at all the budgets, you think of what is not infrastructure, what is not security, and what is not education, you found it. So, that's the conclusion of my remarks, and I'm curious to know if the selectmen have any comments. Members of the board, comments?
I mean, just, I think the two takeaways for me is, I think I now have a more intimate understanding of what we actually do and who does them, things that we probably take for granted all the time. And I think probably the community, anybody who's come and looked at these meetings or attended, probably feels the same way. I mean, we really, you know, took a figurative look under the hood of municipal services in the town of Redding. And the other takeaway is the talent and commitment and creativity of the people who work here in town government. Most of us work in the private sector. You know, we were in the public sector. I work with the smartest and most talented people in the banking industry. And I would hold any of you people up to those folks. And what you do behind the scenes with no complaint, I think, is meritorious. And, you know, and I read through the comments, you know, on the survey, and it made my stomach turn because I know how hard people work, and I know the commitment that people have. And I know that any of you people could leave your jobs and make twenty thousand dollars a year more doing something else, but you don't. You stay here, and you're committed to the town. A lot of you live in the town. And I think that we really owe a debt of gratitude to people who work here. And right now, I'm just talking about municipal government. I can say the same thing to the people in the school department. You know, a lion's share of our teachers live in Redding as well. So, I think that, if anything, I've gotten just a deeper appreciation for the people who work here and for what this town does. And, you know, I think if we really look at kind of what's the legacy this board wants to leave to the next board or to three boards down the road, is that we're really going to make a commitment to funding these services going forward because that's what we owe to the next generation. And, you know, Bobby talked about risk. You know, the biggest comment we read from things, "Live within your means, live within your means." You and Dr. Dougherty, you could present a balanced budget probably in fifteen minutes, right? Here's the money that you have. Here's the balanced budget. But then what you talked about is risk. What are we not doing, right? What are we leaving on the table? You know, what are we, what are we, you know, what are the things that aren't going to get done? What kind of response times are we going to get? Is the trash going to get picked up? I mean, we don't have to, we can pay for trash. Other towns do. I mean, those are the kinds of things that you have to think about. And, you know, it's not just balancing the budget with the revenue that you have. You have to think about what's the kind of town you want to have. You know, what are the kinds of things that you want to do and you want to leave for your children? And I think that that's going to hopefully formulate this discussion. And if anything, any voter takes away, they paid ten minutes' worth of attention to any of these meetings, they realize that they get a lot of value for their buck here and that if they're going to err on the side, you know, err on the side of protecting our services and growing the town. So, that was what I learned in the last two weeks, and I'm really glad that we did it this way and hope we do it again.
From my perspective, Bob, I think this year tried a different format, which is very effective. We didn't just show what we thought would be tolerated. We showed what we thought was needed. Many people watching on television see this for a month or a few meetings a year, and there's really no muscle memory baseline for them to understand the discussion. So, when a budget is presented, it's not necessarily evident what's missing or what's not covered. This year, for the first time, in the town side, we've done a great job, I think, to illustrate the missing pieces. The puzzle is missing a couple of pieces. This year, we showed the public what the pieces were. And I think we're aspiring not just to transparency, which is all the data, but, you know, what's in a word? I really think it's trying to make it clear to folks what the data means and what the missing pieces are and what the consequences are to not doing that. We talked about risk. That's the implication around public safety. There's also risk built into DPW. Work doesn't get done on time. And some of this isn't evident in the first year. Sometimes you're lucky. Sometimes, as you said, we're, we got a good town, maybe not necessarily in a great geography. So, we, you know, we're fortunate, but that won't always be the case. I think we've aspired this year to be clear and to give context. And to echo what Barry said, I too was troubled by the tone of some of the comments around communication. Not that they were wrong, because they're real comments, but rather that we hadn't achieved much in the way of filling that gap. I hope these four meetings have done that. It's not the end. We know that the citizens all have busy lives. So do we, and the half-life of this information is pretty short. But we do want people to understand what the needs are, where they lie, what the consequences are to not doing them, and naturally, the cost. And in a future meeting, set of meetings, this board will look forward its collective view for what a potential ballot question would be to fund some of those needs.
I'll be somewhat briefer than you two guys because you've said a lot of good things already. I would say the greatest benefit to me to having these four sessions is it's taken a static list of outtakes and really put flesh and blood on it. And I've seen now what the needs are that are being defined here. And the job we're going to have as a board of selectmen is to balance those very real needs against the ability and willingness of the community to pay additional funds. That's going to be a major challenge. I'll give you one example. I just got my Social Security statement for 2018. There's a two percent COLA, but guess what? Part B Medical eats up the whole two percent COLA, so it's another year of zero raises for folks with Social Security. And be contemplating another multi-hundred-dollar expense is going to be difficult on top of a hundred fifty dollar a month increase that I've experienced, and it's probably typical in taxes this year. So, we have an educational job to do, but there is a reality out there that is very true for some people. However meritus our arguments may be, they may not be able to afford this. Others can. And I'm hoping we can reach as many as we can to proclaim the news here.
Any other comments on the board?
Yeah. John? So, I'm just going to kind of cut right to the practical questions you ask. I thought the timing of this was far superior to anything we've done in the last four or five years. I think the idea that we've waited till January has got to be in our history, not in our future. It just seems logical when you stop to look at the timeline. We're in an era of outsized budgets because when you're, when the growth rate of some of these expenses is automatically going to outstrip the two and a half that we got coming in. And at a certain point, some of the growth will expand the revenue base. It will also expand certain fees, like excise fees and things like that. I mean, there's a reality. We are in an era when we've got to deal with the outsized budget and what that means. And this is not our budget. This is your budget. We act in an advisory capacity, but when you're done, then we've got to look sometime, in this case, by January thirtieth, to try to make a decision whether or not we feel as representative of the citizens that we can live with your budget. That's kind of what an override's about, you know? And that's our responsibility. That's not your responsibility. So, we can advise a way on your budget, but when you come back with it, then we've got to make a decision as to whether or not we can live with the way that you've constructed it. it. So timing, I think, is really important, and I value the time that we have. Because this, I mean, literally, I would, personally, I'd get started before Thanksgiving, and it would give us more time. I thought that the candor of the, of the department heads was, was excellent. And I say that because I have a sense that although two years ago, you know, the reports weren't that different, they were very different. And they were very different because the department heads, not because they were told, they had a sense of duty to constrain themselves. And you made them not do that. And I think that that was really important, and I would wholeheartedly suggest that that's a process you should keep. You and, and future boards and future, you know, town managers, I think it's a, it's an exceptional, it's an exceptional process, because it opens, this is true transparency. This is really what goes on. And because we do it in a public setting, it allows citizens who want to take the time to listen and be interested to understand what's going on. That holistic view is the primary difference, in my opinion, of what I've seen over the last, you know, four or five years. I think that it's really superior. To continue on the practical side, away from the process, but to the substance, the pillars, I think, are, state very succinctly what our job as selectmen is, and that is, you know, security, education, and infrastructure. If you worry about those three things, and we manage the risk of the absence of money being spent in those three areas, then we're doing our job. I mean, you know, they do pay us a magnanimous salary, you know, we should deliver on that. That's really what citizens hire people like us to do, and we hire, you know, a person like you to help us along that way. Some other key things that I saw here that I think are really important. You mentioned briefly, Bob, that you were not necessarily going to make your decisions around your budget on the, on the new versus the existing, and I think that that's a wise choice. Just because we always did something doesn't mean we should always do it. And I think you have to constantly, in your process, measure this against the risk of the three pillars that we are instrumentally involved in. And so, for example, if you come to a decision that you've got to make, you've got to have a balanced budget, how you're going to do that, you know, you're going to be like Houdini, I think, you know? I mean, we know we're outsized by a million and a half. You've got to, you have to come back with a balanced budget without knowledge of the outcome of January 30th. So I would urge you to stay within the framework of what you laid out here, which is the managing the risk of those three categories. And it strikes me that from each one of the department heads, we heard things that are, that are new, that directly touch all three of those and, and risk around that. And then I think the other thing that you need to do and we need to do is understand we have a history and a demographic in this town of what we want, what we expect, and how we're willing to spend money. Now, we cannot change that history. We heard a lot of comments, you know, in a survey we did, and I thought that that was refreshing to get those. I didn't like them, but it was refreshing to have people speak their mind in a way that they needed to. We have a demographic that has a certain interest in what they're interested in, but we have to continue to measure that against those three categories. I think, Bob, I would just say to you, your remarks on the pillars is so appropriate.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, I'm not going to wax philosophical. Those are all pretty practical looks at what I heard over the course of the last four meetings.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, yeah, John, thanks. So, Bob, sorry, I have to put my glasses on here. I'll, I'll just make three, try to fit my comments into three categories and be clear. You asked for feedback from a first-timer on this, like, like George. Two thoughts on that. I think it was extremely helpful to get the full ask from all the departments. In other words, not their balanced budget ask, but, but what they feel they needed and why they felt they needed it. So that was very helpful, very helpful exercise. I think I, my fellow selectmen agree on that. I'll agree on that. I think that, you know, to the extent that we can, in future years, to, just for easier clarity in communication, to have spreadsheets, and maybe we can get this next month, that match the presentation so we can follow along to the extent we can. I know you generate Munis sheets. I don't know if they easily, you can do a data dump into Epics with those. And I think that would just make it easier for, for me to follow along personally. I think as far, so the second area of comment is feedback from this board. I think you've just heard a fair amount of it. I would personally prefer that after tonight, we let you do your job and not send you individual emails that are sort of out of the public eye, giving our thoughts and ideas on the budget. And I agree with John and others, and on focusing on the three priorities that you listed there, and I trust you to do, to, to, you know, that would sort of be your guiding, and I agree, I agree with, I agree with that. So I prefer more this general feedback for you, and then you go do your work, and we will leave, leave you alone for a while.
You all heard it.
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah.
For 20 days.
You deserve it. I mean, if we're going to give you some thoughts on the budget, I think we should do it in a public meeting. The, what I think would be helpful for January, and we've, you know, John's talked, we've all talked on this, is to, for the operating budget, it seems like there are salaries, expenses, and accommodated costs, which have all, you've presented in the Munis sheets and you presented it elsewhere, and then there are capital costs, like for facilities and DPWs. To see all those in, in Excel spreadsheets, yeah, there may be 60 pages of them, but at least it's all out there. And then the, you know, just to put the, the add, I think your idea of an add-backs is a great one, and just have those in a different color. And as far as FTEs are concerned, I think it's great that you, you adjusted it to 37 and a half hours per week. But if an employee works a 40-hour work week or a 41-hour work week, then they should be a 1.1 FTE. You know, we have to be honest with the employee and for the public. So, so I think that, that would work well. And lastly, I think we need to be very clear on, for the add-backs, what the community will get for those add-backs and what they won't, you know, sort of the opposite is true. What they won't get. For example, I think the police discussed that they'll get, you'll get more feet on the street with more police. And if, if we don't add those, you'll get fewer people checking traffic. I'm going to speeding. I'm going to regret saying that. But I think that you'll get, you'll continue to have a police force that is slightly stressed, and I'd, you know, rather not have that. I think that's a cost too, which should be noted. So that's, that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks.
I wanted to ask a follow-on on your security concept. Is that only physical security, or do you put fiscal security in there too? Because our-
I would say it's long-term planning as well as fiscal security.
As well as operational security to our finances.
You know, generally speaking, the biggest risk we take right now is our employees are doing too much work for FTE.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that in any other way. As there is turnover, as people retire, we can't replace that.
Yeah.
It just, it doesn't exist in the workforce anymore. Rare exception, we're able to do it, but we're going to run out of that option, I think. Let me ask the board a question. It was purposely vague and irritating at the first meeting. I could have shown you some of these summary charts, but I wanted you to listen to all the departments.
Right.
Would you have preferred to see, for instance, the page that's up here now, listing FTEs? And then-
That was all right.
At the beginning. Because I think it would have distracted you.
I think the way you did it was, was, because it forced us to listen.
Right.
And then the number takes care of itself.
You did it bottoms-up, which is the only way you can do this. Top-down, everyone stops listening after you get the title.
Okay. I wanted to try it this way. That was my belief, but I apologize if it irritated you, but too bad if it was the right way.
No, I, I would have listened either way, either way, Bob. The only thing that would have helped me is, you know, seeing the FY '18, FY '19 FTEs so that what we were given beforehand in the Munis sheets, we could easily follow along, more easily follow along with the talks I got.
Yeah, a year ago, I think it was just a year ago, we got away from using Munis for FinCom at town meeting for that reason.
Yeah.
The Munis reports are not user-friendly, quite honestly. But to have done what I'll, I'll need to do during the month of January to produce handmade documents for you two weeks ago, I don't think was physically possible, honestly. What we create is Excel spreadsheets out of Munis for all the things we discussed. We then create a Word document and cut and paste into it all the Excel spreadsheets and create all the Word content. So that's a very manual process. That's the only way we can do it effectively. I didn't get many comments, but those I got were that the format last year was much better. First of all, it's much shorter. It was much more concise. It said, here's a division, here's what it does, here are the amount of employees. And we still don't have FTEs sort of mathematically categorized, but we'll include it in the text. So ideally, I would have loved to presented the budget in that format. It just wasn't physically possible. Certainly not if you're going to start before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think that all the material that the department heads gave us, gave us what we need to build our own executive summary. I mean, it's there. I'm just trying to get you to do it instead of me. So, but, you know, kind of the point is that knowing as you listened that it was all there is kind of reassuring. It allowed you to listen, knowing you could go, knowing you'd have that, and then, you know, you could take it, take it apart. I mean, every one, each of these, everybody had their own style, but all the material was there that was necessary. So-
Yeah. I thought it was especially important to let each department use its own style.
Yeah.
In the past, that's not been the case, and that won't be the case when a budget goes to FinCom and Town Meeting.
The only other comment I'll close on, we spent a bunch of time talking about FTEs, and of course, that acronym stands for Full-Time Equivalent. Equivalent is the operative word here. Equivalent is what? Bob, you've described that there are at least three different time standards that people work on. I'd also point out that not all of this work is level of effort. Some of this is fixed scope of work, and you subtract somebody out, you take out more than that proportion of scope of work. They may have a particular skill, particularly in the technical trades. Some of it may just be feet on the street, and you're getting more of it. So the level of effort is interesting, but not always, in my mind, is positive. What you, what I look at is the total spend and the total benefit. And sometimes the benefit isn't just equivalence, it's you're getting a fixed amount of scope of work, and it's particularly true in DPW, but I think it's also true elsewhere in the organization.
I think the way you homogenized it to that, to that point exactly.
Yeah.
It simplified it. I mean, it doesn't really matter. What matters is that it's standard, you understand it, and it can be judged against what you were doing last year. You did that. You homogenized each year, so that works. One of the things I'd just add is that, based on your comment about new versus old in relationship to managing the risk of the three pillars that you described, I almost think it demands that you go to zero-based budgeting.
Yeah.
You know, I hate to even say that to you, because I know it's, I know what that means. I mean, it's a beast. But I don't, I actually think if that, if you're going to stick to your guns on that-
It's potentially disruptive to the employees.
Yeah, that's, um-
If that's the only downside.
You know, what you're asking for essentially is for me to list every line out of the, in the budget and prioritize it. Was the very first thing we do, prior to town manager, of course, and everything that would follow. That's logical, but especially in an, in an organization with unions, it's impractical.
Well, some of that, that's where your zero-based begins.
Yeah.
Those are plug numbers. Those have to be plug numbers, because you have, you have no control over those. And so to that extent, it's not really zero-based budgeting.
Yeah, okay.
For that exact reason. So I'm not suggesting that you tear it all down and go line by line, because some of it, you can't. But when you think about the new versus the old, I guess is what I'm saying, we heard a lot of, a lot of interesting stuff that matches up to those, those three pillars you talked about. And so the concept of zeroing in, zeroing down on those areas that, under which you have control, I think is, you know, may be the piece that you have.
Well, the thing is, if you're being asked to live within your means, right, then basically you have to be able to have the power to shuffle the deck and prioritize the things that need to get done. And obviously, it doesn't mean that you're, everybody's starting out at the same place. It means you have the ability, not only the ability, you have the responsibility to basically say, well, you know what, we're, we're going to not have B, because we really lack a lot in A. And, and so that, maybe that's what your balanced budget looks like. And, you know-
That's what zero-based budgeting does for you.
And people will, and people will look at that and say, oh, I didn't mean that.
Right.
Which is, I think, a lot of what, a lot of people, when they see that. I mean, it's clear, if you're prioritizing, prioritizing public safety and education, while there's a lot of, and infrastructure, there's a lot of things that we heard over the last two weeks that are not that. And, you know, so that, that's what you have to do when you're only given X amount of dollars to work with. And, you know, if that's what it looks like, that's what it looks like. And then-
I think an important message for people to understand, and it's not easy, is we do live within our means. We have to, by law.
Right.
Other types of government, other levels of government do not have to live within their means.
Nor are they all-
We are not the same as the federal government in that regard. State government, somewhere in between. They have to have a balanced budget, but they're a lot more creative than Sharon is about what a balanced budget is. So, you know, I thought that live within your means comment was interesting, and I understood what it meant. But you pointed out exactly, the flip side of that is, okay, Mr. Resident, Mr. Customer and Business Owner, you have to live within the means of the services we can afford to offer you.
Yeah.
That's been the message that has not been delivered to the community in quite some time, and it's an ugly one to have to-
And is that a risk that you're willing to take?
That's really hard to communicate, unfortunately. People are going to hear it.
Well, that's not his risk, that's our risk.
Well, it's our collective risk.
Because, you know, he serves at the pleasure of the board. We serve at the pleasure of the citizens, so-
It's a difficult message to get across cleanly. Yeah, Bob, I agree. I, we, by definition, we live within our, towns have to live within their means. The question is, what kind of means do the town, do the residents want to provide for, for what services? So it's not, you know, the public sector is very different from the private sector in that regard. In some ways, you, you just can't, the comparison from the private sector to the public sector doesn't, doesn't work, and this is a good example of them. Something you said makes me think of perhaps walking back my statement about nice Excel spreadsheets with color codes and things like that.
Thank you.
Down to the salary level. No, because, because I think, obviously, we want to be transparent to the community- transparent to the community when we come out with, with the budget. But I think there's a personal aspect about this that, that you reminded me of, and that is, if you change priorities for a level services budget, and that means that you may have, you know, if we end up with a level ser, or, I'm sorry, no override, and you end up shifting from one department to another, and it means layoffs, I think perhaps FTEs by department, general FTEs by department, instead of listing someone's position as, you know, an add-on, that, I can see how that would get complicated and not be good for morale. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I have to create a budget, and it's not only balanced, that it can actually run the town satisfactorily without an override.
Right.
That's my job. An override can add things that people may want, or they may not.
Right.
I may want them too. And I could take a much more severe approach this year, and say, we're going to stop doing B, as Barry said, in order to do A better.
Right.
Honestly, I think that would be seen by the voters as a threat. You're just threatening X.
No, no, you're just giving a, I mean, those are, that's the way life is.
So I think we're one year away from that. I think I can balance a budget. I guarantee you, you're going to see things, all of you are going to see things, and you don't like.
Mm-hmm.
I don't either.
But the reality is, is if there's only X amount of dollars, there's only X amount of things you can do. And, and I think the mistake that we made, years and years and years, that we rectified this year, is that we hid the true cost of running the government from the voters, because we didn't, we didn't want to ask them for any more. Right? And so, you know, those discussions that we had in public for the last two weeks, looking under the hood, nobody ever heard. Right? And what that does, and that, to me, is, is the ultimate non-transparency, because to run the government the way you need, it costs, you know, that's what it costs. And we said, well, we'll, we'll, we'll get it done with less. And, you know, you times that by 13 years, now we are in the position of where we are. So, you know, I, I, I'm not saying you have to lay out an austere budget just so people can kind of feel they got hit over the head with it. But we need to be, just, just, I'm asking you to be honest. Right? And, and I think people will, will trust that, and then they'll make the decisions about what they want to add back in, or what they want to spend, or what they want to get.
Yeah.
Bob, one more request I would have, and I think the board would appreciate this. As we move down to January 30th, we're going to be discussing not only potential putbacks, but sustainability measures. Last time we did an override, it was like an eight-year sustainability that we were looking at. I'd like to see a number of options presented, maybe position by position, of what a two-year, four-year, six-year, and eight-year sustainability cost would be in terms of benefits, et cetera.
When you say sustainability, what do you mean?
Oh, one's evident.
What, what kind of money do you need, need to have to fund that position for the eight years? Take into account.
Let me just put one example on the table. The Arcasa grant runs out in, what is 15 months after this next budget will start. So it's fine for this year. I don't have to do anything.
But none, yeah.
That doesn't mean you won't see it as an override request, because it needs to be funded at some point. For the first 15 months, the Arcasa funding, if you will, in an override is free for something else. So, I think last time, we were too complex, and if you will, got a little too cute on the sustainability.
Yes.
But I agree with you.
We didn't explain it well.
It's disingenuous to ask for an override, have it, have one succeed, offer the services, and then in two years be saying, well, you can't afford this anymore. So we have to find a way to avoid that. I agree.
I think the mistake we made last time is that we, we, we thought that if we were honest and transparent and upfront about what we wanted to do, we can, we can say with certainty to the voters is that we're not going to bother you for another eight or 10 years.
Eight or 10.
And I think that, I think people, people want to be, continue to, continue to be asked. So, I look at it as, you know, obviously, you don't want to do an override, and then two years come back and say, oh, you know, ran out. Right? So you want to, you want to have some length of time. But in my mind, it lasts until it doesn't. And then we come back, and we do the same process again, and lay out the facts again, and ask the voters again, and prove to the voters again, this is what we've done, this, and this is why we need the next one, you know, if, in fact, that actually happens. So, I would actually not put a long-term horizon out. I would sort of maybe do sort of a...
Intermediate.
A, a, you know, sort of, okay, a minimum one, but not to say it's going to last, you know, going forward, because, you know, if it doesn't, then we have to make the case again, and if we're successful, the voters will agree. If we're not, they won't. So, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, we should really put forward what we want to do. Obviously, the Arcasa is the one thing that's not going to be, is, you know, we have, we have to sort of, it's only good for the first year. I think people will understand that, you know, well, Arcasa's not going to get spent in the first year, it would be in the second year. But I think we have a lot of, a lot of things that we can show folks that, okay, this is what would get put back. Right? And you heard from all the department heads about what they do, and, and what would potentially be lost if we don't. So...
Anything else like that, Bob? Like Arcasa?
On the school side, yes. But on the town side, honestly, I, nothing comes to mind that's as obvious as that. Schools tend to have more grant-funded positions. They may wish to...
I see any grant-funded as a potential candidate for that.
Well, you know, the key to this too, is you balance this budget, is to not take hostages. So in other words, you don't have, you don't make a cut that, you know, completely isolates, you know, one form of government. It's got to be blended across in order to be able to make it work. Because if you take hostages, you know, it gets perceived that you're just trying to scare people into doing something. And I frankly think that's the worst thing you can possibly do, is scare people into doing something. You got to give them the opportunity to pick and choose. And, you know, you know, what you mentioned earlier is, maybe in order to be able to manage the three fundamental pillars of the government, you're going to have to trade off some services that, you know, heretofore have been present. But that's not going to cripple the running of the town. It's going to change, because as somebody said, everybody's got to live within their means, whether that's the town or whether that's how people utilize the town, you know, within the means of what they have to do. I think what it gets down to is, people just want a certain amount of clarity as to what they're getting, for what they're paying for. And I think that you're in a perfect position to be able to do that. First, in a balanced budget, and then we have that opportunity on the 30th to lay out what they're getting for, what they're paying for. And I, and I do think we have, I understand sustainability, but I think we got to be careful that we don't make it too complicated. Because we made it too complicated last time.
It was...
There's no two ways around it. It was, it was more complicated than it should have been. And that's because we, we live on this playground. And to us, it was like, oh, this is, yeah, this is straightforward and simple.
We have to step outside of our...
People that are looking at it, who aren't in these rooms every night.
That's exactly right.
They go, what the hell are these guys talking about? And I, and I get it.
There's too many moving pieces last time.
Yeah.
So, to, to follow-up on Dan's question and Barry's comment, are, are we looking, Barry, are you suggesting something like that Bob do a roughly two and a roughly four-year projection, knowing, or maybe two to three, and four to six, or something like that?
I mean, I would, I, I mean, I think anything less than four is not, you know, it's like, we need to last a little bit, but not five, six, seven, eight, nine. I mean, that, that...
It's actually a fairly simple exercise, whatever I...
Yeah, I'm just suggesting a couple of increments that we could maybe agree on.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, once, if you pick a number, and let's just say it's a million dollars. If an override is passed at a million dollars, that means that the revenue goes up for a million dollars forever. Okay?
That's right.
It's not like next year, and then we got to go back and do it again. So if what's built into the budget are things that are sustainable inside of a number, in other words, you've got two and a half, so that, so the million comes, and then two and a half comes on top of it.
It's when the expense line crosses the revenue.
Correct. So that, that just becomes arithmetic. So, the sustainability thing doesn't have to be complex.
But that's what, that's what drove the ask being as high as it was.
Well, that's because we were trying to insulate people for so long.
Well, there was a lot of things, a lot of things drove the ask as high as it was. Sustainability was part of it. I mean, we slashed a number that was handed to us as a request from the school committee, and it still was a number that was, you know, outsized from the voter's standpoint.
So, what do we want to do, John, with, I mean, as far as this sustainability, what are we asking Bob for? Are we, as a group, going in?
I'll actually answer that it's, I could have just showed you some. It's not far. I'm not going to do an in-depth detail.
No, no, no. I, I understand.
But what we did in the past was, we looked at our sort of annual budget, accommodated costs, I just reminded myself, look like they're going to grow around 6% a year.
Yep.
Our revenues are going to grow about 3% a year.
Yeah.
So by definition, that means...
At some point, you're going to cross.
...the accommodated costs are squeezing the operating budget by X dollars a year.
Yes.
I'm not going to say a number, because I'm not sure I'm right, but there's some number that is a good annual number. Last year, we moved it out to eight or 10 years, so it was a big total.
Right.
And then you would index the cost of each putback.
Yeah, no, I get that. I, I, I guess I'm trying to get a sense from the board, to you, how, how...
You can easily discuss on the 30th or before.
I don't know. We'll figure that out.
Okay.
Here's the baseline expenses for an override, and then how long do you want it to go based on?
And the thing is, the other, the other thing that's going to determine how long it goes for, is if any, you know, if our economic development efforts start to pay off, we have new growth that we never had before. What that does is that it basically pushes out the next time we have to ask people, because now our revenue is growing to the point where we can cover those costs. So, you know, we're assuming, you know, a basic, general kind of growth. But God, I'm hoping that it's three or four times that in two, three, four years from now. Because...
How many projects, Gene? 16?
Right. So, I mean, but the thing is, we're all going to have different timelines. We're all going to come in at, they're all going to be different levels. But hopefully, that's the part that, you know, gets the traction, so that this one hopefully becomes the last one for a while. Right? Because we've, we've augmented our ability to raise revenue. So, you know, again, you can't promise that. You can't bank on it. You can't budget it. But you could, you know, you can, you can pray with it, and, and you can nudge it along. And that's exactly a lot of the stuff that we've been doing.
And its existence absolutely mitigates the sustainability part, no question.
And so that's why I'd rather, let's put it what we need, and then, you know what? I, I think that our economic development efforts are really going to be successful.
It's certainly going to, I mean, though, the amount of projects in the pipeline are going to change that. Both in the form of tax revenue, fee, I mean, excise taxes. We saw it already.
Meals tax, you know.
I mean, all of those things start to come into play. But make no mistake, if you look around at communities in our general geography that have similarly situated economies, they are not afraid to come back to the voters with things that they need. They're simple, they're small, they're straightforward. It's a yes or it's a no. So we shouldn't be afraid to do that. When you make it too complex, and you make it too big, and you wait 14 years, you know, these are the, these are the mistakes we've been making. You can't be waiting 14 years. Practically speaking, it's a linear problem. Two and a half goes up, costs go up faster than two and a half, there's a crossover place where you can't stay even. It is much sooner than 14 years. And so we've got to acknowledge that.
And we have a lot of ground to make up because of the fact that we didn't do that.
Andrew, I would say one thing. I think that any estimate of sustainability is qualitative and cannot be quantitative, because you don't know what the future holds.
Sure.
The public will inevitably see it as maybe, not a guarantee, but some form of assurance. And I, I think all you can do is to say it's directionally correct. I'd be really nervous about doing anything more than, you know, doing the quick math of where incremental revenues and incremental expenses come in. It looks like it's X to Y, and leave it at that. If anything more than that, it's going to be taken as some sort of an assurance. And I'd be really nervous.
No, no, yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that. I was just trying, there seemed to be some disparity between what, what Dan was asking and what, and Barry's follow-up. And I just wanted to, didn't want to give Bob mixed, mixed messages.
Many comments from the public. George. George Caction called and wrote, "So at the risk of making some stupid comments, because I'm still trying to digest all this, and your last comment, Bob, may have answered some of my questions. But when we talk sustainability, we're talking about maintaining level services over years coming in the future."
Correct.
And presumably, as you said, or just arithmetic, as John says, you can say it's X percent per year is going to go up on everything. But maybe for the public standpoint, it's talking about that, but then also talking about the add-ons. In other words, make it very clear that, okay, expenses are going to go up, you know, it's going to, the deficit here is 2 million, and with revenues up, the net effect is 1.5 million. But I like your risk that you talk about. And if you talk about the risk of not doing some of the add-ons, and you're having that, and obviously, every, I think this would, people would happen, happen anyway, but I'm trying to get my head around it. So by not doing certain things, by not getting four more, four or five additional policemen, which are not in that number, but not, when you don't do that, you take certain risks. When you don't educate our kids, you take the risk that some of them are at home with their parents and drugs or whatever. So there's all of these risks that I think need to be laid out, but that's an add-on. So in other words, have it clear that it's, I don't like the word sustainability. I know it means, I had to think through it here, okay? I'm slow on this. Level service, okay? We want level service. Sustainability, I don't know if strikes...
Maintaining level service over numerous years, I guess.
Yeah, but then it's going to go, it's, you know, X percent is that amount needed. Your 20, the 28 million, that's about 2 million up. It's going to be 2.5 or 3 million for FY '20, et cetera, et cetera. And then the public looks upon it as being a surplus now. And so, it gets a little crazy.
We'll debate it.
But I think it, you know, again, having very clear separation, and, you know, using the risk concept, I think that's great. You're risking this, you're going to have more apocalypse. I mean, it's like the train wreck just now. They didn't spend the money, and the risk of not spending that money on safety measures resulted in far more costs that they're going to have.
Thanks, Mark Baxter. First, three points. One, very good discussion tonight. Very productive, very helpful, and it together. Second, I think the idea of a close to somewhat zero-based budget that establishes the priorities absolutely makes sense. It's the only way to take it forward. Third, on the concept of risk, I think that that's a very valuable approach to lay out. But I also think that context is something we want to keep in mind also. What I mean by that is that over the last several years, we've endured some pretty strong cuts in people, in services offered. It's resulted in people working ridiculous hours or high, crazy productivity, things that aren't, sorry, the word sustainable, they can't continue. But we've gone through this process for a number of years, and we've lost things. How many people know, for example, you know, last year's budget, there was a loss of a firefighter and a policeman. As we talk about, gee, we need this, and the department heads came forward, many of those things were already cut in the last few years. I think we just want to make it clear, so that everybody understands that, first of all, there's been severe looks at things already. You've laid out very nicely, Bob, kind of where, you know, where it is. We've not just cut to the bone, we've cut into the bone. And that's where it gets problematic in some areas. And, you know, it's not that, I'm not trying to paint blue and doom. I'm just saying that this process, and not asking for money, not asking for an override sooner, trying to, you know, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out, goes so far. Probably gone past that point a little bit. That's, that's the reality of where we are. I think laying out the risk on one side, and the context of where we came from, some of the cuts that took place, is important. As it relates to these charts and the process, I think the process actually is, it started out very broadly, now it's coming into focus very nicely, which is great. I'd love to add some context to these also, even looking back a couple more years, is to make sure people understand, there's been cutting. We've lost services. People, we've lost projects. Now what we're doing is coming back and saying, look, there are only certain things that can happen with the budget that we have, and then those add-ons are the opportunities. Risk is absolutely a critical element of saying, hey, here's what you're not going to get. I think people need to also understand, here's things that we've already lost. Just make sure you understand that as context.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good point.
Good point. Bob? You know, semantics are very important, and I certainly agree with Mark. In this room, this discussion makes sense. Outside this room, we have to be much simpler, which is fine. An important concept for us, all to think about is the word cuts. When a police chief asks for a new police officer and statistically proved why we didn't do it, was that a cut? No. Maybe it really was. We're asking for four police officers or five police officers. How many of them were cuts? Well, based on the math he showed you and math I could show you, all of them were cuts. They were never done and they should have been. But then you start getting into credibility and, you know, all that, but it's not easy. We could have hired police officers all along and knocked on something else.
Right.
It's all a balancing act. It's, you know, you remember the exercise, I know Barry does, where Pincam had a meeting at the senior center and said, what services can you live without that you use? And over the years, we've got exactly zero responses to that, which shocked me. That's the problem in a nutshell. A service can be used by 100 residents, and to them, it's the most important thing we do. The other 25,000 may not care. That's our opinion supposed to be. That's the balancing act of town government. Yeah. But I agree with Mark and I take your point, cuts is the difficult concept to wrap around. You know, I've told you, these 20 FTEs, seven were cuts of actual positions in the last couple of years. I will also tell you, the majority of the 13 that's left have been requested for many years as a deficiency in the organization might not have. It's not suddenly we woke up this year and said, oh, let's ask for some things. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Well, you know, to that point, saving, I said this earlier, saving money is sometimes the most expensive thing you can do. And this is a clear demonstration that over 14 years of saving money over and over and over again, we've found ourselves with a very expensive problem, and that is what happens.
Yeah, and to put in context, I don't know the numbers. Bill Brown knows some of them. Whoops. The FTEs in municipal government 30, 40, 50 years ago were higher than these numbers.
Much higher.
Just to be really clear.
TPW.
TPW hit a high of about 120 or 25 employees. They're down to 40. Technology and equipment obviously helps them do their work more efficiently. And that, you know, capital-for-labor kind of substitution is different in different departments.
That's the microcosm of the US economy, by the way.
Police and fire were much higher also in the past. Now, I would argue that technology.
When was that?
Has helped them, but complications have hurt them. There's much more work to do now as a police officer or as a firefighter EMT than there was 30 years ago. So, you know, I'm very happy with the efficiency, generally speaking, of all the departments. It's really honestly at the point where we'll always try to squeeze more out of it, there's just not much left.
Yeah. We're sort of in a sense, the people in the bubble, and we talk to each other and we speak in inner, maybe a code. We understand these cuts, we know the history. We have to be very taxpayer-focused. What does it mean to them? What would these cuts translate into your life? And I think the more we focus that way, the better off we'll be.
Yeah, I liked Andy's comment about what are you going to get? I mean, I was just going to mention that tonight. List the thing you're going to add back and explain it. I think that's really important. We are all going to know what it is. Other people that see a list aren't necessarily.
But we speak in tongues here.
Any other comments from the public? Anything else from the board?
No. Thank you.
You've got another agenda.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Just take a minute just to clear the.
Good day.
We have a corn. Barry, yo, guys, front and center here. Get over here.
Yeah, we looked, I looked at that calendar and I said, oh, and they just couldn't do it soon.
Is that just like candy cane or is that like chocolate?
You need four nights every time.
If it was chocolate, yeah. I'm going to really go to maximize the man.
Chocolate's good for you. This broad.
Let's just look on.
Actually, just like Mike. And I ran my tax numbers. Now, he's got a higher income situation. I think the average elder is going to say hundreds.
All right, the last topic for tonight is a discussion regards a Redding Fire Department settlement, the trucking. You know, turn this back over to Bob. Thank you. And Chief Burns stayed if you have any questions. Just to be clear, at the outset, a legal settlement sometimes sounds bad, this is money coming into the town. So a tanker rolled over on I-95 in March of this past spring. By law, we are allowed to recover our costs from such a tanker. However, trucking companies and others have lawyers, so they didn't just write a check. It took several months of negotiation with our attorney and their attorney to come up with a proposed settlement, which is not the full cost, but it's the best we could do. And I think Greg, is it about 65% or so of the cost?
Cost of the year.
Okay. So minus legal fees, maybe 50%. Better than nothing. Town council suggested if we took this to court, it would cost far more than whatever it is we think we're leaving on paper, even if we wanted it. So this is a proposed settlement that would require, and lastly, these funds will go into the general fund and become free cash at the end of the year. It doesn't go back to the fire chief's. Plus, he had to incur expenses, and that's just the way it is. Bob, this property was not within Redding, Redding rendered service, but it was not.
But then happened.
Was it Wakefield, was it?
Yes, it was actually in Wakefield.
Do you know Wakefield also had claims against the trucking company?
I know Wakefield filed claims against them as well. I don't know how far they've proceeded. We just stayed with it. We bill for our time up there and for use of our.
Is it common for Redding Fire to bill in that regard? You know. Yeah, the fire chief mentioned just in passing during his budget that he's in charge and responsible for recovering money from FEMA or MEMA. He's a bulldog.
Right.
You know, it's just like it's his money. You know, carefully using your time along with fellow Mike and DPW especially, FEMA especially keeps changing the rules, changing employees, and sometimes it takes you two years of diligence with an obvious intent that maybe Redding will just stop. Greg does not stop.
Good. Chief, can you kind of estimate how many hours you've spent on this?
On this?
Just curious, I mean, you know, ballpark.
Probably, yeah, I'll do it. It was probably days of 14 or something like that.
Okay, any other questions to the board? This is, we have a motion.
So do we approve both the settlement and the release form? Is that, would that be an appropriate motion?
Yeah, as presented.
Move to accept the settlement and associated full and final release form for the issue, the case between the Redding Fire Department and the Weisen Trucking Company.
Second.
Motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Oh, you're not going to read it?
No, I was told not.
I always got a suspend.
Only the bonds.
All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Yeah, he can sign the one that's in.
We have 5-0.
Is this the signable one?
Yes.
With the 3B3 on it?
Now, is that the one that calls for the notary and all that? We'll see that one.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll get, all right. So you have something to sign.
Yeah. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Any other business come before the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make them all.
Just have the blue reply.
Notions. Mr. Berman seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment. We are 4, 5, 0, Mary.
Yeah, I think it's unanimous. Who's the holdout?